It's a special joint meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission and the Ohio Planning Commission, Thursday, September 11, 2014, 5:00.
Here.
Chair Merk, Vice Chair Foster, Vice Chair Walker?
Here.
Commissioners Akins?
Here.
Commissioners Boggs?
Here.
Commissioner Ronnie?
Here.
Commissioner Basasha? Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Nicklin?
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Nolan?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Zabilla?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Jagiello?
Here.
Planning Commissioner McAdams.
Lojowski?
Lojowski. Sorry.
Didn't I hear it?
Thank you.
Do I lead the pledge or do you?
You select someone.
Who would like to lead the pledge tonight? Thank you.
We're allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lawrence. That opens our public comment period. I have two.
Go ahead and read the little introduction under the public comment to prep them.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public wishing to address the Historic Preservation Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. Cards are available at the City Council Chamber's lobby. All comments should be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the chair. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and must direct their comments to the chair, not to the audience or press. While the Historic Preservation Commission is in session, members of the commission, city, staff, and members of the audience are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Thank you. I have two speaker cards to begin our public comment period. That does not mean that anyone in the audience who are not limited, we can stand up and get our attention and come to the podium. I'll start with Dawn Theding.
I'm actually here for the public hearing portion. We're always going to do the Ojai Valley Inn. Is that appropriate?
That's.
That's fine. Yeah, that'll be under public comment. So what's the other card? See at the top right.
I think they're both here for that.
Okay. And is there anybody else who wants to see under public comment?
Mm-hmm.
You can ask them if there's anybody else.
Anyone else for a public comment period? Okay.
Move us.
So with that, we go to the staff report. Kathleen Wald.
Thank you. It's a little awkward, isn't it? A little bit different.
Yes, you're behind me tonight.
So I know this is a little different and the arrangement's a little bit out of the ordinary because of the joint meeting, and I just want to give you a little primer on how we're going to operate tonight, and that's going to be that we're going to present the staff reports and take the testimony from whoever's in the audience so we don't have to repeat it, so to speak. But again, it's kind of a little bit free form here because it's a little unusual. But we will close the public hearing for the Preservation Commission hearing, the work permit, and they will take action separately. And then you will open for the DRP and take that action separately. So I hope, if we have any questions about procedure, just feel free to ask because this is a little different. And I'll just add the clarification that on the little blurb about public comment, you know, this is a joint meeting, so those same things that Mr. McCready read off would also apply to any comments you'd have about the Planning Commission's deliberation over DRP or anything you wanted to speak to them about tonight that wasn't on the agenda. And with that, I'll go into the staff report. And so as I said, it's going to be a little bit unusual, and I hope that we have prepared this in a way that sort of keeps it straight. So the first report I'm going to give you tonight is on the work permit for the NEF Lounge. And obviously, this is before the Historic Preservation Commission tonight because it is a landmark. It's landmark number nine for the city of Ojai. And we have prepared a staff report that has a lot of, both staff reports have a lot of redundant information in them, so we won't read that into the record. If you have questions, you can ask staff later. But we will go into the actual issues with the NEF Lounge. And just like to give you some background on it, that the inn received an approval for a large renovation project in 2003, and as part of that project's approval and in accordance with the final EIR done for the inn, submitted an application for landmark consideration for the NEF Pierpont segments of the hacienda building. Their historic reported, report submitted at that time indicated the property has historic and cultural merit. A portion of this project involved work to the NEF Lounge. As previously indicated, the NEF Lounge is a City of Ojai landmark. In October 2006, the Historic Preservation Commission recommended to the City Council that the NEF Lounge be declared a City of Ojai landmark, and the city adopted this resolution, oh six thirty-eight, declaring it a landmark, and its number is number nine. The following criteria was used in determining whether the NEF Lounge met the criteria for nomination as a landmark. And I can read that into the record, but I think it's pretty clear in the staff report, and the staff has provided this for you because the criteria that was utilized in determining whether the NEF Lounge was, can be a landmark, is the same criteria that you use in determining the work that's presented tonight or proposed tonight for the NEF Lounge in relationship to whether that work proposed degrades the elements that were used to landmark it. So with that, I can, I guess I might as well just go into it and read it. So its character, interest, or value as part of the development, heritage, or cultural characterization of the community. And the response was, "The Ojai Valley Inn and Spa's clubhouse is an example of Wallace NEF Spanish hacienda-style architecture. The building was the first private recreational facility in the city of Ojai." And B, its identification with a person or persons who significantly contributed to the development of the community. The response, "Edward Drummond Libby, patron of Ojai, envisioned a distinct architectural plan to reshape the city of Ojai. The NEF Lounge is one of those elements envisioned with Libby's plan." C, its embodiment of distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style valuable with the study of the period, type, method of construction, or use of indigenous materials. NEF's architectural style for the clubhouse project is of Spanish influence. Period sources have labeled it as Spanish hacienda. NEF won an award from the Southern California Chapter of the American Institute of Architects for the project. D, its identification as the work of a master builder, designer, architect, or landscape architect who, whose individual work has influenced the development of the community. Wallace NEF was the architect of the clubhouse. NEF hailed from Pasadena, California. NEF's style exemplifies the Spanish-influenced California architecture and fulfilled Libby's plans to provide the city of Ojai with remarkable architecture. E, its embodiment of elements of design detailing materials or craftsmanship that render it architecturally significant. And I don't know how you pronounce this, the Andalsian stair, oh, thank you very much. Stairwell is a prominent feature, and the exterior was specified as plaster known today as steco. Its embodiment of design elements that make it structurally or architecturally innovative. The clubhouse was allotted for its horizontal emphasis and employed a drop roof pitch of two one-half and twelve on the main roof and two and twelve on the veranda roofs. Its location or singular physical characteristic that make it an established or familiar visual feature? The clubhouse is located on the grounds of the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, a well-known location in Ojai, in the Ojai Valley. Its suitability for preservation or restoration, any structure, property, or area that meets one or more of the above criteria shall also have sufficient integrity of location, design, materials, and workmanship to make it worthy of preservation or restoration. The clubhouse is a classic example of Wallace NEF's work and should be preserved. It is cleared from the above analysis, the NEF Lounge met the criteria for landmark status. Once the Historic Preservation Commission determines, determines that a property meets the above criteria, it must by resolution detail the following information. An explanation of the significance or lack of significance of a nominated landmark or historic district as it relates to criteria of the designation. And the response was, "The clubhouse is a vital part of the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa and one of the final gifts from Ojai's patron, Edward Drummond Libby." And B, explanation of integrity or lack, or lack or of integrity, I think that's a typo, excuse me, of the nominated landmark or historic district. The interior of the clubhouse appears to be, have been preserved. Additions to three sides of the structure have altered the exterior, including addition, deletion of windows and doors, removal of a terrace to support growth and expansion of the facility, and removal of the exterior wall for connection to an interior passageway. In the case of the nominated landmark was found to meet the criteria for designation, the significant exterior architectural features of the nominated landmark that should be protected, and the types of constructional alteration other than those requiring a building permit or a demolition permit that should be reviewed for appropriateness pursuant to the sections four dash eight and four dash sixteen. The exterior of the structure should remain as is without further alterations. That was the finding made, and in the case of the nominated district, it was not applicable. So finally, proposed design guidelines for applying for criteria for review of work permits to the nominated landmark. The clubhouse should not be altered further. The Historical Preservation Commission should review any proposed alteration efforts. The relationship with the nominated landmark or historic district to the ongoing efforts of the Historic Preservation Commission to identify and nominate all potential areas and structures that meet the criteria for designation. The Ojai Valley Country Club, clubhouse is Ojai's historical landmark number nine. And the appropriate recommendation is the appropriate permitted uses, special uses, sign regulations, parking regulations necessary to preserve the nominated landmark. And it just says, "The clubhouse is part of the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa, a hotel and resort that will continue to operate in compliance to all applicable codes and regulations." And I just read those in because that's kind of the baseline where we find ourselves tonight for how we should consider the work permit for the NEF Lounge. Also in the staff report is the background on the NEF Lounge, and I won't get into that. I'm sure all you people on the commission and maybe the commission commissioners have read it in the staff report, understand the historic prominence of this NEF Lounge and what's occurred over time. I will get into the proposed changes, so they're kind of divided up into three areas, the north portico, the south portico, and the NEF Lounge interior. And this comes pretty much straight out of the historic report, what's, so you got that as an addendum or an attachment to your packets tonight, and I just separated out those things that are actually requested to have an alteration to them. So the first thing is the tile floor in the north portico, which is proposed for replacement. The comments from the historian was, "This floor is noted as being nonoriginal to the building in Phase Two report." So that's, that's the status of that. In the south portico, also proposed for replacement is their tile floor, and it comments are that this terracotta tile floor is noted as being an original character-defining feature of the building, although it originally defined the north portico, it is now enclosed in a corridor between the NEF Lounge and the restaurant. And finally, the NEF Lounge interior, which is, the features are, remove the east windows and replace with doors. And I think you have photos in your packet that show what that, what that's potentially going to look like. And the comments from the historian are these, "The window openings are original, but the window units themselves are replacements." And then the south wall, open to the south portico between door openings. This wall, along with the hardwood flooring, defines the southern edge of the lounge space. So these changes that are presented tonight, before you, should be evaluated for their impact on the historic elements of the NEF Lounge. In evaluating these changes, the commission should determine if they have a negative impact on the historic elements, and if this impact is so substantial that it would have an adverse impact on those physical characteristics that made it eligible for landmark status. The commission should keep in mind that some of the above changes are to areas that appear not to be original, part of the original landmark status. And if the commission agrees that the original landmark property was only the NEF Lounge and not the adjacent interior passageways, then they should focus on the improvements just proposed tonight for the NEF Lounge. The commission should also determine that the changes proposed do not have an adverse impact or one or more of the physical characteristics that made the NEF Lounge eligible for its landmark status, then the project cannot be found to be exempt from CEQA. And I went into the sequel analysis, and I won't read that into the record, but I will just paraphrase by saying that it's very important, this project as proposed tonight is proposed as a exemption. In order for it to qualify for that, you'd have to make the finding that none of the things that they're proposing tonight for the NEF Lounge are, would cause a substantial damage to that significant resource. If you can't make that finding, then, then we wouldn't be able to approve the work permit because it would not be qualified for a categorical exemption under CEQA. And I think I've detailed that out, that requirement fairly well in the staff report. And then we finally just give you kind of a refresher course on what the regulations say and what you're looking for as far as a work permit. And again, those findings are that the proposed work will not detrimentally alter, destroy, or adversely affect any exterior architectural feature or any other feature which led the historic resource to be designated as a landmark. And in the case of construction of a new improvement upon a landmark or a landmark site, the exterior of such improvement will not adversely affect and will be compatible with the exterior appearance of an existing improvements on said landmark or landmark site. And so with that, I would just ask if there's any questions on that staff report before I move to the one on the DRP and, which includes all of the information or, do you, Chair McCready, do you have a night, do you want to open it up for public comment on this report or wait into the other report and have all the public comment together?
I thought we were going first. I don't care.
I thought we were going.
Go ahead. Then we'll stop right now, and you guys go ahead. It's fine.
So am I opening it up to the public or to the commission?
You can ask them if they have any questions of staff, and I'm open, and then after there's no questions for staff, then, yeah, for the HPC commissioners.
I'd like to ask the HPC commissioners if they have any questions of staff.
Did staff do this environmental impact? Turn your microphone on. Please.
Oh. Did staff do this environmental impact report? Who did that?
That's that, the final impact, or the FEIR was done in 2006 for their previous project.
The page.
I don't know who.
Attachment C, page one of five, cultural resources, archaeological resources. I just wondered who did that environmental impact report?
I don't know who compiled it. I just know that it was adopted by council as appropriate environmental review for their project in 2006. I assume it was a consultant that did it. I think it's probably a, does it say that on there?
It says that, in the first paragraph, it says that what has been commissioned to Compass Rose. Phase one archaeological report has been commissioned to Compass Rose Inc., so I'm guessing that's maybe who generated.
Wasn't me.
So I hope that's clarification that this, this becomes a document of the city as it was adopted by the city council with that original, or the previous project in 2006. And the reason that you have that excerpt of that environmental report is so that you understand how the cultural resources were reviewed previously and the mitigations that were encompassed in that, including the landmarking of the NEF Lounge.
Okay, then I would open it up to comments from the HPC commissioners at this time.
Yeah, I have a question.
Brian Akins.
Yeah, Brian Akins. It seems as though what we're hearing is that because of the archaeological report that was done in 2006, that basically everything's okay going forward on that. However, this was deemed as a landmark in 2006. I'm not sure if that landmark status took place after the environmental report in 2006, but as a part of that landmark status, and the information that was provided to us by staff, it seems as though it says in multiple places that there will be no changes in the future.
Okay, so.
So do I misunderstand or?
Give me a question out of that so I can answer a question for you.
So my question is, what bearing does the landmark status that says that there will be no further changes to the NEF Lounge have to do with our conversation tonight?
Well, okay, so I think that that's why that's provided in for information for you because that is how that, you know, that's how the, part of the conditions of the findings that were made when it was, when it was landmarked. It does say that, but as I read into the report, it also says, let's see. Does say without fur, it says, "The exterior of the structure should remain as is without further alterations." That's the exterior. And then it says, okay, "Proposed design guidelines for applying the criteria for review of work permits to the nominated landmark." That's on page five of nine. It says, "The clubhouse should not be altered further. The Historic Preservation Commission should review any proposed alteration efforts." So to me, that seems contradictory. Shouldn't be altered further, but you should review any alterations, and that's why it's in front of you tonight because obviously it's very clear that the exterior shouldn't be, shouldn't be altered. But as with most of our landmark statuses here in the city of Ojai, there, there really isn't a clear picture of exactly what was landmarked. I mean, there, I read into the record, and there's even some discussion whether the north portico, the south portico was included in that, whether it's just a NEF Lounge, whether it was, and so, you know, that's why it's before you tonight, so that you have the discretion to say, you know, are these things elements that were part of the elements that were, that allowed it to be landmarked? What is their significance to the proposed changes? And are they, you know, is that part of the clubhouse? Is that not part of the clubhouse? Because as I said, you know, clearly we provided you all the documentation that was there in 2006, and I think that there still is some of this language that is, that is a little bit contradictory. You know, should you review proposed changes or are there none allowed? So I think that, yes, that's why it's in writing to you because I don't know what the intent was.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
It seems to me that any landmark requires some work occasionally and that there is written into the law that any work permit has to be issued by the commission, and they have to review whatever changes are required. But it does say, it's set in here that this granting of the landmark status was part of a larger approval that was given to the Ojai Valley Inn at that time. And so we're assuming that this was agreed to by both sides for it to become a landmark, that there would be no further alterations of the clubhouse. The clubhouse being the NEF Lounge, which would be defined by the transition space on the south and the north portico on the north. And so it would seem to me that that was a pretty clear guideline for future Historic Preservation Commissions not to allow any kind of major alterations. And when the, you have the Secretary of the Interior standards, they do apply to the building as it has evolved in time. So it seems to me erroneous to go back and say, well, this wasn't exactly the way it was when it was built. But at the time, it was landmarked. This was what was agreed to at that point in time as it had evolved. And so I feel that we need to look at, at the landmark as a unit in itself and make our decision from that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you ask one more question too, please?
Commissioner Akins?
Yes. The south wall that's being discussed for essentially elimination was at one time an exterior wall. Are we not, is that considered an external wall as a part of the NEF Lounge?
Well, I think you need to take Commissioner Walker's comments into consideration if, if you agree with what, this is for your deliberations tonight, but if you agree with what he's saying, then you would take it as it was landmarked at that point in time. Was it an exterior wall then? I don't know. I don't believe so. So, I mean, that's really up for, before you to deliberate tonight.
But I think if it wasn't an exterior wall, then we would have to look at the whole building because part of landmarking, and you said it was a little vague about whether the additions made by Austin Pierpont, nineteen thirty-four, would be part of what was considered this, this building. So just looking at the, at that, at that lounge by itself, you can see that it, it represents a historic structure as a lounge. And from what's being designed here, it looks like with that wall being taken out, that that room is going to become more of a lobby for the bar and the restaurant than it will be an enclosed, self-enclosed lounge, which the people in the past made, took a lot of pains to create this indoor-outdoor space, this transition space with the skylight overhead and keeping the tiles of the south portico to give it that effect of still being a standalone lounge. And the open floor plan that's proposed is more of something from the 50s, you know, not from the early part of the century. So, and then even the exterior east wall is proposed to be changed, taking the windows out and turning those into doorways definitely changes not only the exterior of the building on that side, but changes partially the use of the, of the building. I think you have to consider the spatial arrangements of the building and whether it's going to maintain kind of that historic look, which, again, I think the people who've worked on that room in the past have taken great pains to keep it as a lounge and not just make it into a lobby and a pass-through area for the bar and the restaurant.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I'd like to also speak a moment on the, the opening of, the opening to the south portico between the door openings and opening up that wall.
Pardon me, Rose, could you share your mic? Thank you.
Thank you. That, as Commissioner Walker mentioned, now we have a space that formerly was of the lounge, and then we have the space that's beyond. And suddenly, it's no longer the lounge. We would have to hang a sign there and say, "This space formerly known as the lounge now encompasses all of this." I don't want any, to alter it beyond the point of it being a lounge, no longer makes it a lounge. And it no longer is NEF's design. It's a much larger room now, and that is something contrary to what I would like to see happen.
Can I?
And I also wanted to ask, and maybe you can guide us through that. It says on the NEF Lounge interior, and talking about this south wall, and says, "Photo, see, submit a package." And I'm trying to envision what this new room would look like without that wall that opens into this other larger room.
Let me, let me just, Darwin, let me just indicate this, that the applicant is here and he's here to give you a presentation on, you know, we opened it up for questions and I'm happy to answer questions about procedures. I know it's very awkward how we're doing this tonight, and it's kind of the first time we've done a joint meeting. But before we get into, you know, he is here, you probably should open the public hearing and let him come up, give a presentation, and then, you know, we can get, I think he's going to do a PowerPoint, correct?
I was going to ask if the applicant was here.
I'm sorry, what?
Chris.
Okay. Yeah, so we're hoping to walk you through and give a presentation on what it's going to look like.
Then shall we start that now?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
I had a comment.
Well, we're gonna, okay. Commissioner Boggs?
I mean, like they gave comments, or do you want me to wait?
Just hold on, and we'll, and if you don't mind, that would be really great. And then we'll, and then we'll go take the applicant's presentation, and then you'll do your speaker cards, and then we can go ahead and then get Commissioner comments.
Okay. So I'll turn the time over to the applicant from the Ojai Valley Inn. And I don't have a name, I'm sorry.
You gotta look at it right in back, right here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Kanzora. Over here.
I knew it. You said, okay.
This one? Kanzora.
Thank you.
I just wanted to start out with a little discussion on what we're doing here, and then I'll turn it over to the architects.
Can you hear me? So as you know, the Ojai Valley Inn, we celebrated our 90th year anniversary last year, so ninety-one this year. Very excited about that. As part of that celebration, we developed our first-ever history book, which I have a couple copies here. I don't know if anybody knew that. And this outlines the history of the property all the way from 1921 to today. So I have those here with us. And this is really where it all started. We also, as part of that celebration that took place all last year, created a history walk in the NEF corridor. Have all of you been in the building? Have all of you been in the building in the past? Has any of you seen the history walk of all the black-and-white photos? So, what we've really been trying to do with the NEF, both the hotel side as well as the lounge side, is draw people to that space, because we want them to understand the history of the inn and how important it is to us. We've also developed historical packages. We do historical tours at the property every Friday. So, history is obviously a big part of the Ojai Valley Inn. It's something we're proud of, and it's something that we perpetuate to all of our customers, and we want to keep very much alive. We really... What we want to do here is something that we've been hoping to do for a very long time. It's a costly project. It's not... This isn't just a... This is a very well-thought-out project. It's something that we want to do to embrace the history and to elevate that space. Currently, that space is really otherwise understated. It's unvisited in many ways because of its transition to the restaurant, the exterior patios. And it's really important to us. So, what we want to do with that space is we want to take it, we want to activate it. We want to preserve the historical features, obviously, that are all in the report for you. The major... And we will maintain it as a lounge. It is still a lounge, it's the NEF lounge. What we're able to do with the space by adding a bar in what is currently a hallway that transitions into a restaurant, it does open it up, and it makes it more of a great-room concept where it is a lounge, where people can sit and gather in a library-type of a setting and have libations. So, that's really what our goal is, is to bring attention, really renew that space, bring a new spirit and energy and excitement to, like I said, which is currently a widely-unvisited And what we're trying to do here today is work with all of you and create a lounge that balances our history and educates our guests as well. So, part of the project is to embrace the history. We plan on black-and-white photos in the lounge. We plan on incorporating menu selections, both from cocktails back from the 1920s, create some logoing that, again, brings more interest and education on who Wallace NEF was and why it's important to the Ojai Valley Inn. So, it's really important for us to explain to you that this is our history to preserve as much as it is yours, and we are just as engaged and interested. And I can tell you from our owner's perspective, the Crown family, that this has all been a very thoughtful approach. They want to make sure that whatever we do to this space is thoughtful and balanced, and that we do keep what is so important to their generations of family history very relevant in our customers' forefront. So, we're really here to work with you and to create the next chapter of the space. As you can see over here, the design elements are very much still in that Spanish hacienda or colonial style, albeit a little bit more modern. It all is still reminiscent of that history, and we believe that the designer, the architect that we chose from San Francisco and the history that research that we've done, will be able to take the existing space and blend it in with the elements that you see over here and the different materials to relaunch the Wallace NEF lounge as a really exciting place for all of Ojai to come and gather. We really want to make the space like the living room of Ojai. We want to invite people to come to it. We want people to gather there. And currently, just with the way that primarily it's the couple pillars in the wall that really separate that space, it's very hard to bring people in and activate that space. But the primary components, the exterior, the ceiling, which is incredible, if you haven't been there, it's just gorgeous. I mean, you can't replicate that anymore. All the fireplaces, even the fountain outside, I mean, we're working with you to keep those elements the way that they feel and look and upgrade the space. So, that's really what we wanted to convey that message to all of you tonight. Do you have any questions for me specifically before I introduce?
I was going to ask if any of the commissioners had any questions of... I'm sorry, I didn't catch your first name?
Chris Kanzora.
Chris Kanzora, thank you. Rose Boggs?
Why do you need to take out the windows and put in doors in the wall? That's the only really original wall there.
The two windows actually face a courtyard, what we currently call our fragrance courtyard. The plans were to call that the NEF courtyard as part of the NEF lounge. And by the way that you look at the floor plan, you can see where the bar is to all of the seating. Lounge area flows really nicely in and out from the exterior. So, you would, instead of being two windows flanked on each side of that fireplace, you'd have two French doors that look very similar to the rest of the architecture. And it's just more of a flow, so you can sit outside by the lavender and sit inside the NEF courtyard and then come back in. So, we're really just changing, really, the pieces of the window to turn it into a single door.
Because there is a door from the patio there, and there's also a door from the big hallway there that they could go out there.
That's true. This would just offer an... Really, an overflow space. The doors that currently, if you can all picture entering right now the NEF lounge, there's the fountain, and you have two doubled French doors. That's actually coming from the oak grill patio where guests are eating and dining. And oftentimes, that pathway into the NEF lounge is avoided because you're walking by people who are eating dinner with their families. And so, by going through the NEF courtyard, which is proposed, it's currently called the fragrance courtyard, it does not connect... It only has those windows. If we had the two doors, guests could easily be uninterrupted by walking through dining space into what is the NEF lounge.
Thank you.
I don't think that we really have anything to say about the furniture, but I can't see any historical significance of these vinyl little, cute little chairs that are in there.
I would agree with you. There is no historical value. That's all part of this plan, is to replace all of the furniture and bring in actually really nice statement pieces that are Spanish in style. We don't have any of the furniture selections, but they're very... They're much more rich and, you know, beautiful furniture. I would agree, those barrel chairs that are in there now kind of add to the overall sentiment that it is a little bit of an understated and underutilized room.
Thank you. So, you wanted to turn the time over to the design team?
Yes, unless you have any other questions for me.
No, let's go there. Thank you. And could you introduce them, please?
Yes, absolutely. Come on up. Stan Corneille, our architect, please.
Thank you. Appreciate hearing.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, Dan Klinger with CSA Architects. We're the executive architect for the project. The design architect is EDG. They're based near San Francisco, and they've been working on this for a number of months now. We really appreciate your willingness to come and convene this special meeting. I don't know if you know, but the inn has a window of opportunity to do the heavy work that needs to be done for these three areas that we're talking about tonight, one of them being the area that's adjacent to the NEF lounge. And so, on January 5th, the resort closes, and it's closed for 10 days, and then it reopens. And so, they're trying to get this to happen in that short amount of time. So, just so you know what the pressure is on the design team, and everybody else has been so great in helping us. The city staff, for sure, has been so accommodating in helping us to move the project along. One thing I may... Let me go to the slides here that pertain to the NEF lounge, since we're starting off with that, and it's kind of in the middle of the sequence of elements here. Yeah, you're going this way. Okay, so this is a plan of what's there existing. And you'll notice that... Oh, it doesn't work too well on the TV. I have a green one, maybe it'll work.
That doesn't work either.
That doesn't work either. It works kind of, you know? Yeah, so there's... In the NEF lounge in particular, we started out with a... Okay, great. We started off with a plan that was more aggressive in terms of how we addressed the NEF lounge. There was things that we're... We really, when the design first started, we were not kind of like up to speed on the fact that it was a historic landmark, number one, and what we needed to preserve. So, the initial design for the NEF lounge was... Had quite a few more elements taken out. And I only show this, and we include it in the booklet, just for your information. We don't want to spend much time with it, other than the fact that we put back into the design most of the design elements on the exterior that were relevant to the NEF lounge, and also elements that were on the interior, that being the fireplace, which is... Let me just use my pointer here. Which is here in this location originally, the fireplace that was here originally. And then also, the fountain that was in this location. So, if you see the location here, the fountain remains. Also, we're not punching through the wall and any of that type of thing. So, we've kind of really scaled back what was originally envisioned and come up with this plan here, which is... Proposes to do the main element, which is removal of the wall between what was originally the south portico and the NEF lounge. And the reason for this is so that the bar, which is a new bar in this location, can activate that space. So, as part of kind of the Secretary of Interior's way of thinking of historic buildings, this is kind of an adaptive reuse of this space, and it makes the space more valuable to the tenant and... Or to the owner of the project and to the use to which they will want to use this space. Currently, this hallway is pretty much a transition space. There's really not much activity that can happen in this space. And so, by putting the bar there, it gives us an opportunity to activate that space and also make something really special out of the NEF lounge space. So, the main thrust of this would be to open this wall up, and we also like the idea of adding these two doors. One thing that wasn't mentioned earlier, and it's something that didn't get into the report, but we gave Kathy an example of this, it's the original drawings that were discovered at the Huntington Library. And they show in this location here, doors instead of windows, which is kind of interesting. The original design had doors in it, and I can pass that around later.
We actually have the PowerPoint.
There's actually...
To the other PowerPoint.
We have those available for you to print screen.
Oh, you do, okay. Okay, yeah, that's great. Is there a...
Mr. Scott, keep talking.
Okay, keep talking. All right.
There's extra copies of the passage for the audience if they would like to have that.
Okay. So, that's the foundation plan. The next slide. Okay, so this is the original drawing of the NEF lounge. You can see that there was a fountain here originally. There was a fireplace in this end, but the original design didn't have a fireplace in this end. However, we think that probably either during the construction or in the 1934 addition, that fireplace was added. It appears to be to us and to our historic consultant that this is part of the original building, that fireplace on this west end of the room. So, what we're proposing is to open up this area here, maintain the lower ceiling here, but bring it back to the original character, which is a little different now than what we see now in the current development of the space, and maintain all of the ceiling and the character of the ceiling here, along with the fireplace on both ends. Maintain the fountain and these doorways. You'll notice that the doorways are a little different-looking than what's there now. There was a... Some kind of an element in the middle that created a division there. We're not sure exactly what was finally built in that area, because there's a couple of columns on this side.
Is there an elevation?
Yes. Uh-huh. Yeah, this is the elevation of the north side of the property with the existing fountain, the doors that are there. And then the other side, the south-facing portico here, which has since been filled in. And then, of course, in front of this is where the restaurant is now. So, the next slide shows the doors that were part of the original design, where we're proposing to make them doors again. We don't know whether the windows were what they actually built and didn't side with the doors, or whether...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I didn't see anything that indicated they were doors. It didn't...
Right here.
Those look like windows to me.
Okay, if you go back... Go back to the plan. Right here, look at the... Those are shown as doors.
Yeah. The slash line.
So, anyway, it's different than what's there. The current windows that are in those two locations...
They are all drawn alike here.
Are not original windows. They're... Have been replaced from the original wood windows, I would assume. Likewise, with the doors that are in these locations, have all been replaced. So, continuing on, the fountain, which the current design of the fountain there was a reproduction, I think, happened back in the '80s or '90s?
Ninety-four.
In ninety-four. And so, it's not the original fountain design, but it's one that's similar and sympathetic in its character to what the original fountain was there. This fountain was built, it does appear on photographs, historic photographs. So, going back to our... Can we go back to the other PowerPoint presentation? Unless there's other questions you have regarding the...
Commissioner Akins? I do have a question, and I think this was mentioned in the staff report. Are you inferring that those... Because the plans called out for doors, that doors were originally built, actually built? Or do you not know?
We don't know. We don't know, because the only way we would know is to do an investigation, you know, destructive investigation to open up a portion of the wall and to see. Currently, they're windows, but they were designed as doors initially. So, we don't have any evidence one way or the other.
Okay.
Other than what we've discovered.
Do we not have historical documents and historical photos that go back from that area that show?
We haven't found anything as yet that documents that particular area.
Huntington had nothing in the way of photographing it?
You know, they may have. We didn't... There was a time constraint, too, in terms of how much research we could do, but we didn't find any evidence in terms of photographs of that particular elevation. So, but anyway, if we're thinking of the intent that Wallace NEF had when he first designed it, there was an intent that those be doors and whatever that's worth in terms of our intent to make them doors.
This original sales brochure.
So, you have a photograph that shows windows there? Okay.
This publication. I think the inn reproduced that a couple of years ago.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. What I'm holding up is just an Arbolata brochure that I'm told was a sales brochure for the Arbolata area that included photographs of the Ojai Valley Inn at that time, so.
So, just to continue through the slides really quick here. So, this is the proposed... Current proposed plan, and those elements that we discussed are still included, the fireplace on both ends. We maintain these doors, which are different than the original but are what's there, the existing fountain that's here. We propose these two as-to-be doors, and then this opened area here, which is for the design and for the activating of the space, we think is the most important element of the proposed renovation. Just to continue down, this is an elevation. This is from... Looking from the inside of the NEF, this particular elevation, interior elevation, shows the proposed bar and then the space between, maintaining the trusses here. The low ceiling is not shown here. At one time, we thought that the trusses continued and that the low ceiling was actually an add later, but we later discovered, based on the drawings and in our research, that in fact, the low ceiling was a part of the original design. And so, we'll maintain that low ceiling.
I'm sorry to interrupt you again, Commissioner Akins.
Could you go back one slide to where you were showing that layout? So, if we look at where the existing wall is, there's the... What Mr. Kanzar, I believe, was talking about, are the timbers that are going across?
All those remain.
They will?
All the trusses remain, all the roof.
And looking at the drawings that we have, I don't see anything that supports those timbers where the wall currently is.
There visually, no, but there's a new beam that will be installed in that area. that area to carry that span.
New beam that will?
It'll span that distance from there to there.
Okay.
It's a, it's a big steel beam, really.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, the bar, and then this is a view, looking through the whole property. So, this, this right here is the NEF Lounge with the proposed, leaving the proposed trusses just as they are. There's, there's the new ceiling over the bar, which is in the area that originally was the South Portico, and then the proposed restaurant is here. There's a wine tasting room and, and dining rooms adjacent to that. This is a development of the landscaping. This courtyard is directly adjacent to the entrance to the, the restaurant. There, the, right, right now, the, the passageway that connects the NEF Lounge, which is up in this area, to the 1934 addition here, is in this area. So, you come out through that, there's a, a new courtyard with a fountain, and then access to the restaurant here, and, and new landscaping in that area. And then this is what we're proposing in the, what was the Aroma Court, we call it the NEF Court now. The, this is the NEF Lounge, the end wall, the proposed doors in this location, a little patio terrace that comes off of that, and steps that go down to this lower elevation here, where there'd be a terrace for events and, and other gatherings to happen. And it's also the access way to the restaurant through here. These are just some examples of some landscape elements, and these are the detailed plans of the landscaping. And then this is just an elevation that shows what we're proposing new. So, this all really stays exactly as it is now, including the plaque, which is right here. And then this is the end elevation facing the east, with the proposed doors and little, little terrace here, existing chimney and roof, and then the corridor between the two, and entrance to the restaurant in this location. And this, this you, you see in your booklet, this is showing the, the existing window, and then the proposed door in the same location, the same shape of opening with the returns and so forth. And then this is what we're proposing to open this, this, make it into a breezeway, so that it's, it's more open, and, and when the restaurant is open, there are shutters here that open up, and when it's, and when the restaurant's closed, the shutters close, which is what you're seeing in this picture. And here's some images of the NEF Lounge that we, that we did find. This shows the existing, the fountain, the proposed, the original fountain, the original doorways. This is the original elevation that is the same as the one in the drawings that were discovered. This is the South Portico, this shows the Andalusian stairway that goes up, another, another nice picture of that. And then this is what the original South Portico looked like before the restaurant came into being. These are some materials that are going to be used in, in, in that area. We propose to keep the existing oak flooring that's there, just refinish it. There's a new oak flooring that would go in the passageway between where the South Portico was, is now, that would become an oak floor. We think, after looking at the existing drawings, that the, the floor that you see there now, the Sotio tile, was not the original. It's where, it's weathered over the years, but the Sotio tile's very fragile. It's, we think that it was a different pattern, more like what's in the corridor that goes towards the 1934 addition. It actually had a herringbone pattern and, and a border of, of tile around it, so that's actually in, in the drawings, too. So, we feel it's, in, in that regard, it's not maybe as original as we had first thought. And these are just some examples of some of the finishes. And this, this is kind of on to the next project. So...
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for any Commissioner Boggs?
I just wanted to comment that those tile floors can be very slippery, and people have fallen.
Yeah, I think the oak flooring will be a little more grippy in that regard.
If there are no other Commissioner questions, then I would open up to public comment.
Thank you. Should I just leave this?
Do I do the cards now?
Yes.
Okay. So, first, I have Don Teating. Tell me if I'm mispronouncing your name, Teating?
Teating.
Teating, Don, thank you.
Don Teating, North Signal Street. Good evening. As you all know, the proposed project at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa involves a known historic resource. It also involves earth-disturbing activities in an archaeological-sensitive area. The 2002 Final Environmental Impact Report references the potential for undetected archaeological resources and calls for mitigation measures to ensure protection of possible cultural resources. City staff has proposed a categorical exemption from SEQA for the proposed project. I stand before you to request appropriate cultural resources review for this project, and request you to reject the proposed SEQA categorical exemptions. Reasons are as follows for the record. One, city staff assert that project will not have an adverse impact on historical resources. However, the environmental review section of the administrative, administrative report lacks discussion of archaeological resources to which SEQA applies. Two, determination of SEQA applicability cannot be made until the significance of any archaeological resources within the project area been identified and evaluated. The cultural resource investigation conducted for 2002 EIR consisted of a record search and surface survey of only the project impact areas proposed in 2002. It is unclear if the currently proposed project is in the same area or requires further investigation. Additionally, at a minimum, the EIR should be reviewed to assess potential new environmental impacts over the past 12 years, and should include an updated archaeological resource records search by a qualified archaeologist. Three, recommended conditions of approval 8A and 8B are not consistent with the 2002 EIR recommended mitigation measures on page 13 of Attachment D. Reference to grading should be changed to earth-disturbing activities, and the presence of both a Native American Heritage Commission-recognized native Chumash representative or monitor, and a qualified archaeologist to monitor earth-disturbing activities should be clearly spelled out. In the event that human remains are unearthed, all ground-disturbing activity should cease, and the Ventura County Coroner, local Sheriff's Department, Native American Heritage Commission, and the federally-recognized Chumash Tribe in San Ynez should be notified according to state law. Four, use of categorical exemption may be being incorrectly applied. Categorical exemption is barred by exceptions set forth in SEQA Guideline Section 15300.2, which include unusual circumstances and substantial adverse change in the significance of an historical resource which includes cultural resources. Five, preceding item number four relating to the use of categorical exemption may not even apply in this case, as a categorical exemption cannot be applied once a project is determined subject to SEQA and a final EIR has been certified. SEQA Guideline Sections 15162 through 15164 set forth the criteria for determining appropriate additional environmental documentation subsequent to an existing EIR. And six, to apply categorical exemption to an existing EIR may be considered piecemealing of a project which is illegal under SEQA Statute 21159.27. A project may not be divided into smaller projects to qualify for one or more exemptions. Further, I respectfully request that the city consult with the local Chumash Tribe prior to approval of this project. In summary, I encourage you to request appropriate cultural resource review for this project, and request you to reject the proposed SEQA categorical exemption to ensure compliance with state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Tumamalt?
Tumamalt.
Please correct me with the pronunciation of your name. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Patrick Tumamalt. I'm a local resident at 992 El Camino Coto. Thank you very, very much for allowing me to speak, Commissioners. Where we're at today on this project, like Don was saying, it's categorically exempt, that's inadequate and inconsistent with the state law. And I've worked with the Ojai Valley Inn ever since I was 15, and, and into other projects as, as a monitor, and I truly appreciate their, their efforts in involving us with any projects that, you know, determine ground disturbance. And I would like to see that, you know, first of all, that the, the preservation of our culture and our history is, you know, preserved in the way we like to see it done. So, I would like you, for, for you to consider all these measures and follow the state law. Thank you again. Good evening.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to come forward and state your name. So, with that, the public comment period is closed. Now begins our...
Now we begin the planning commission, and then do the voting after close.
I think, I think that if, if you want to, just go ahead and continue deliberations and conclude this, this, this portion of it, and unless you, you want...
We can let her tell.
Well, yeah, open it up for Commission comments, or if you have questions of staff.
So, I'd like to open it up to Commissioner comments or questions of staff, and let's try to keep it brief. Thank you. Commissioner Boggs?
I worked as a waitress at the Ojai Valley Inn. I know plenty historical stories, and I hope the NEF Lounge project will not disturb the ghost that lives there. I'm familiar with the beautiful buildings. However, I'm from a different generation. It seems like what they want to do is modernize the NEF Lounge. I have embraced the modern idea of open space concept as an architectural feature, but the NEF Lounge is Spanish hacienda style and is historically significant. It should not utilize the modern open space concept. When you take down walls, you're using the modern open space concept. It is a classic example of Wallace NEF's work and should be preserved. We are commissioned to preserve the historical landmark buildings in Ojai. Yes, there have been some changes to the NEF Lounge, but they were mostly made to restore the room to its original design. The exterior of the structure should remain as it is without further alteration. The clubhouse should not be altered further. Those statements are in our packet here. The east windows and the south wall should not be touched. It would alter the historic significance of the room. These changes would have a negative impact on the historic NEF Lounge, an adverse impact on the physical characteristics that made it eligible for its City of Ojai Landmark Number Nine, and also National Historic Register. We are here to preserve.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill, any comments, please?
I already made my comments about the, the opening up the space, and I, and I think of a beeper that might go off, you know, just in my imagination, of you are now leaving the NEF Lounge and entering further open space. That image just comes to my mind, and I, I find that I want to be in the NEF Lounge because it's the NEF Lounge.
Thank you. Commissioner Walker?
Yes, I have a similar feeling about changing the spatial relationships in, in that building, and, and what was painstakingly preserving this lounge situation, and now having it be an open floor plan. And when I sat there and I looked at that wall that was going to be taken out, and I saw those humongous beams going over, and visualizing that there would be no supports for them, it almost seemed bizarre to have those beams with no supports, and I couldn't even figure how they were going to do it. And yet, we heard tonight there's going to be that wall taken out even further, and a large steel beam put in to support those beams, and I didn't see anything mentioned about that alteration of the building in the report from the historic architect, or, or anywhere from the staff report, that that change in the materials and the structure of the building would be happening. And I feel that, at the time that building was, that building was made into a landmark, that people recognized that there was a cumulative effect of all of these little changes that had been made, and that at that point of making it a landmark, they wanted to freeze that in time and say, this is what's going to continue on, and it does preserve the look of the original building. And so, I think now to come and want to change it so drastically, and I think all the changes would have an adverse effect on the architectural features that, that gave it its historic significance. And I don't really see the, the reason for that. I think the inn is very proud of the fact that it's one of America's historic inns, and that lounge is kind of the core of that, and so to make it more usable or attractive by taking down walls and opening it up, I think is going against the whole nature of what we're trying to do with that lounge, to preserve it so that future generations can sit in there and get some sense of what it was like back in the 1920s, when it had its heyday, just as a country club, when there was no inn connected to it. In 1934, Austin Pierpont, a local architect, who gave it a whole historic overlay himself to create the inn and all the rooms and the restaurant. I just, I just think that it should be preserved as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Akins?
You know, part of what I do is I collect historic postcards, historic books, and, you know, you, you go to a, a place, and you hope to not have to imagine what it used to look like. I've gone to buildings where they had a similar structure, they had, have the windows that are still there, and then to picture those someday becoming a door, and then having to picture, you know, a few years from now, what it used to look like as a window, is difficult for me to, to understand. And it, it seems like, you know, someone has looked at this from a convenience standpoint. I'm sure, again, being the CFO, somebody has looked at it from, you know, hopefully measured it from a financial standpoint, and said, you know, again, from a financial standpoint, you know, that this is the plus that will come from making these doors, and, you know, I lean more towards the historical standpoint in keeping them windows, because again, when you look at the, you know, I'm looking at a historic photo here showing it as a lounge with curtains in the back, and it's not in any way meant to be a throughway, it's meant to be a lounge, a sitting area, a place with a fireplace to sit down, to relax, to visit, not as a waystation or as an entrystation for the restaurant, or for a bar, or for something else. So, just, I think we go back to, I think Commissioner Boggs said this, you know, we've taken it from, we're looking, taking it from a historical standpoint to a modern, more convenient, perhaps, you know, business standpoint. So, I have issues with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Roney, do you have any comments?
I would thank you, the applicant, for your very complete and thorough application and presentation. I think that, heard some pretty strong opinions here, and, and it's easy call for me, this is a substantial change to an historic landmark that the commission is charged with preserving. So, at this time, I'd like to know if there is a motion to vote on the approval of the SEQA exemption.
I would move, I would move that we deny the SEQA exemption and also deny the work permit.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Will vote? Commissioner Boggs?
Here, I'll take the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, can I, can I get from you that, based on, I just want to do this procedurally correct? Based on the two findings that were stated in the staff report, I would like to say that you're, you're, hopefully, I'm not going to, I'm going to give you a suggestion as far as deny the permit based on that, as stated on page eight of nine. as stated on page eight of nine. The pro, proposed work will be detrimentally, or will detrimentally alter, destroy, adversely affect the exterior architectural future or some other future and then say what those are so that, um, if the applicant chose to appeal this, your decision is appealable to the city council. It's very clear the findings that you made, um, of how you denied it. You need to make findings for denial just as you would if you approved.
Would you like me to rephrase it?
Commissioner Walker?
I would move that, that because the project will have an adverse effect on the architectural and historical significance of the NEF Lounge, that we, uh, reject the work permit application and require the, uh, SEQA review for the reasons that we felt that the changes proposed, uh, significantly alter adversely the, uh, historic significance of the property. And I think that was even suggested by the architectural historian that he said it partially did it, but I feel that that, um, extends it, that the reason also being that, um, the, it was stated in our, the report that was written at the time that no further alterations would be made to the NEF Lounge. And that we are the, um, successors to that historic preservation commission that made that agreement with the inn at the time, so we want to honor that. And that the West End changes with the, um, addition of the doors, changes the, both the exterior and the interior of the building. Anybody have another one to add as a reason?
Thank you. Commissioner Walker, is, does that...
I think that's perfect. Thank you.
So we'll, uh, now conduct a vote.
Commissioner Boggs?
Well, I'm confused. I'm, I'm voting...
Voting, voting?
Yes or no?
We're voting to deny.
Yes is to deny.
And do you second for the amended motion as well?
I second the amended motion.
And your vote is yes. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Walker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mc, or Chair McCready?
Yes.
Commissioner Roney?
Yes.
Commissioner Akins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I guess you need to, um, sit and listen to my presentation if you would be so kind to do that, to, to the planning commission. So... I noticed that, go ahead, somebody say...
Ms. Wild, yes, I have, I have a question. So...
Oh, I can't see you, I'm sorry.
It's...
Oh, it's... Yes, thank you.
So, um, so now what are we then deliberating?
Okay, so...
Same thing?
No. Okay, so you have before you tonight a design review permit for the renovation at the historic landmark number nine, the NEF Lounge, the main lobby and the pool area. Only, the historic preservation only took action on the NEF Lounge. It's the only part that's landmarked. So the remaining proposal that's before you tonight, you need to take action on. Obviously, you need to take action on how you feel about the NEF Lounge because as far as its relationship to the DRP, because you need to move that forward. If the applicant chose to appeal the work permit, they would need to know your decision on the DRP part of it so that both of those things could go the, at the same time concurrently to city council. If I explain that correctly. So, so they're, they are going to go ahead with the rest of the proposal. You know, as you see up here, you know, the lobby, the pool, and those renovations, because they don't touch anything that's landmarked. So you will be, you will be considering the whole thing and that's one reason we needed you here after the historic, um, preservation commission because they are advisory to you and you, and we, we hope that you take into consideration what they had to say regarding the NEF Lounge. So, um, it just helps that you sat through their deliberations and heard what they had to say. And then you'll take, um, action on the DRP and then, you know, you'll have to prob, you know, consider what they said. That won't be in the staff report because of course, you know, it's after the fact publication. But then it would be, enable the applicant to then both, appeal both at the same time if that is necessary and have that opportunity to go to city council to complete their project.
Thank you.
My impression that the historic preservation commission's decision is just advisory on work permits, just advisory to the planning commission, that we make a decision and if it wants to be appealed, it needs to go to the council.
That's true. That's what I said. Did I not make that clear?
No, I thought you meant that our, what we decided here today was just advisory for them.
No, I'm saying, let me make this very clear.
Okay.
You're not taking it, the planning commission is not taking any action on the work permit. That goes, if the applicant so chooses to appeal it, that goes straight to city council. But we wanted them to hear your deliberations because they're going to take action on a design review permit for the NEF Lounge. So they want, we wanted them to hear what you had to say about the NEF Lounge. So it's, so it's educating them and for their informational purposes, you're acting as, you know, somewhat advisory to them because they're listening to what you have to say about a historic resource. So we, you, we, you know, I, I'm sorry if there was confusion, but I want them to hear what you had to say. All right, thank you. All right, so I'll go through this, um, report and thank you for bearing with me. And I know we're without a chair here and I think a vice chair, both on the planning commission. So, um, um, I guess I need, um, procedurally, how do you normally handle that? Okay, Chair McCready, are you fine with that?
So, opening this session with the planning commission?
Yeah. Since you're still, um, chairing the meeting. All right, so I'm going to go ahead with the staff report on the DRP and as, um, so let me read into this.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you. Before you tonight, it's a design review permit, DRP fourteen eighteen, for the renovation of the historic landmark number nine, the NEF Lounge, the main lobby and the pool area of Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Before you, in the staff report gives all the basic information that we always make, um, available to the planning commission. And I will read the project description into the, into the record. The Ojai Valley Inn is proposing a new renovation project which consists of the following. Um, changes to the guest arrival, which includes the entrance drive revitalization, the main lobby renovation, lobby court renovation. There are also changes to the dining and lounge venue, which is the Marvilla Restaurant renovation, the Ojai Court Restaurant entrance, relocation of a bar and some changes to the NEF Lounge and courtyard renovation, which I think you just heard pretty specifically. And then finally, the main pool renovation, which is a new pool, spa and pool deck, renovation of the pool cafe and bar, new cabanas and a new water feature overlooking the golf course. Um, so, um, I've kind of detailed in this report for you some, what the changes are. You have in your packet, um, full, I think, uh, description of, um, the changes. And we can go into those further in detail and I believe the applicants will be here to, to go over those with you. Um, I have provided in the staff report, you know, some, um, obviously the, the, Ojai Valley Inn has had numerous renovations and projects. There's a hefty historic file on that. We've looked at, have put in your staff report some of the, um, findings that were made in the previous renovation and asked that you look at those and look at what's before you tonight and see if you agree with staff's assessment that, um, the general plan and the zoning are consistent and what they're changing really is no change to the use or the, the uses, the use of the Ojai and Valley Inn or the individual areas, but rather mostly renovations of the space. And, um, therefore the zoning and general plan, um, uh, compliance remains intact. We do note that, um, that there is some, there is potential for tree impacts and a work may, maybe possibly being done in a trip line of existing, um, tree, oak trees on the side. And we've placed a condition on this approval tonight that the applicant would have to apply for a tree permit. I also provide for you the environmental review portion on this and somewhat, part of it is somewhat redundant to that, which was in previously explained in the work permit. Again, there's the finding of it being, um, a cat exempt for, um, based on whether or not you fa, make the finding that the, the, the proposed project, um, is not adversely affecting a historic resource. If you can't make that finding, then of course you won't be able to make the, um, cat exempt finding. So with that, I do note that there was a final impact report done, which was for the expansion in two thousand and two and, um, how that was those, um, the, um, the analysis that was done of the NEF Lounge, et cetera, and why the mitigations. I do provide for you the cat, category exemption and what, why staff has found this categorically exempt. As far as the actual renovations, the actual physical work, that they fall underneath category one, class one, categorical exemption. I do, um, ma, make note that, um, in order for you to make a category one, a class one categorical exemption, you do have to find that it's not having an adverse impact to a, to a historic resource. And so then we get right back to that. If you're finding that the work they're doing to the NEF Lounge is detrimental to a historic resource, we're not going to be able to make the finding that it's a categorical exemption. So, um, with that, I would just offer that, um, in the resolutions, there are conditions of approval. And as with every project before you, you know, there are, um, you'll, the applicant will be giving a, a presentation and available for questions as is staff. And I'm, I'm at this point open to any questions you may have.
I can't see your name.
Oh.
Could you pronounce it for me?
Sure, it's Mac Legowski.
Commissioner Legowski?
Yes, thanks. So I think I'm, I'm still confused. So you're asking, are, are we, is the planning commission then being asked our position if we feel that these renovations are going to substantially alter the historical integrity of the project?
You have to make a finding that, an environmental finding, the categorical exemption, and that that is what SEQA asks you to say. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, that's what, SEQA asks you to make that determination, yes. So your permit is design review permit. Yours, the, yours, the, your permit that you're taking action on tonight is the permit that will do, you know, the, the pool renovations, the exterior changes, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what you'll be looking at.
But it's not including on the NEF Lounge, which the historical commission just found.
No, it is. You are taking action on it unless you, you choose not to, you choose to make, you can alter the approval and approve part and, and deny part. I mean, it's not, it's not a wholesale approval or denial, but you will be taking act, you will, um, review, take testimony and take action on it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nolan?
A question for staff, um, and this is regarding the tree impact. I may have missed this because I know...
I'm sorry, is your mic on?
Yes, it is. Can you hear me? No? The green light's on. No? Okay. Maybe I wasn't speaking loud enough. Um, pardon me. Yes, I had a question about the tree impacts. Typically, um, on projects that we review, um, tree canopies are reflected on the site plan. I noticed that there were tree canopies listed for other trees that are, uh, potentially proposed for removal on the, uh, entry drive, but I didn't see them anywhere else. Is that okay? I mean, like I said, typically we do get that information and it wasn't supplied.
Right. It's not, it's not provided for you in here. It's, um, that's why staff conditioned it, that they would have to get a tree permit. We would look at under, under separate cover the tree permit. I think that, that, um, the applicant alluded to this earlier, that, you know, um, there were, there were time constraints on, on some of, on some of this work due to the, the lead time the inn needs to, to actually close down to do this work. You know, it's a ongoing hotel and inn and spa, so it's a rather, um, large effort for them to actually close down to do this kind of work. So, and, and due to the window that they would have in their, in their, their, the slowest part of time, I guess, for, you would say. That's how it ended up, um, coming to this kind of, um, compacted timeframe. But that totally is, um, what, within the discretion of the planning commission, if you feel that there's not enough information for you to take, um, action on, then that's within your discretion, discretion too, to continue it and ask the applicant to come back with additional information.
Okay, thank you.
Kathleen, I got a question about, oh, excuse me.
Commissioner Giagallo? Giagallo?
Yes, thank you. The category exemptions, uh, the class one category exemption. I, I understand the SEQA category exemption and the, um, the historical resource report category exemption. What is the class one?
Oh, the class one? Oh, um, so, um, class, let's see, I think it's provided for you in your attachments. It should be in the attachments. Is it in here, Sheri? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Sheri's helping me out here. I have a lot of paperwork here tonight. So class one is, consists of, um...
Where can I find that?
What?
Where is that here?
On attachment B, one of one. Oh, let me make this very clear. Each commission has their own set of packets because there's different findings and different, um, and different actions that needed to be taken. We, it's already confusing enough as it is tonight. So the planning commissioners have their own packets with their own attachments. Um, yeah, we brought copies here if you'd like to follow along, if the historic planet, preservation commission would like. We did, we didn't hand it to you, uh, we didn't want to confuse the issue before you had taken actions because I, and I apologize for this being so cumbersome. So, did you see that, where it says that, attachment B?
No, I didn't. Attachment B as in boy?
As in boy.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so it says, it's, it consists of demolition of small structures, minor interior and exterior alterations and minor alteration of landscaping with no expansion of use. Proposed project is a renovation of a restaurant, bar, main lobby and pool area of the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. The project includes renovations to the City of Ojai's landmark number nine. And a review of the proposed changes was conducted and a finding was made that those changes were minor and did not adversely impact the historic resource. Based on the scope of this project and the finding of no adverse impact, the project qualifies for class one categorical exemption. You have, we have a category exemption for you as the DRP. They had one for their work permit. Two separate cat exemptions. Same philosophy in the same language, two different permits.
Commissioner Zabilla?
Zabilla. So, I'm, I'm, we're back to procedural here. I just want to clarify. So, so if the planning commission takes its cue from historic preservation and finds that, and maybe this is just the way to cut to the chase, also found that this is not, um, uh, that this categorical exemption can't be granted, then is everything done? In other words, uh, does that constitute the basis of declining the design review permit?
Um, you could mod, if I'm understanding your correction, your question correctly, um, you could modify, I mean, the way it's presented to you is one way. You can do as you do in other projects. You could modify the approval. You could approve the project subject to, um, the, uh, the Ojai, the lobby, the pools. And you could still make the finding of a cat exemption for that work. And then you could, um, you know, c, condition the approval that the work proposed for the NEF Lounge is not approved. You know, the, I, well, I'm, you're just going to add a condition. If, if this is where, if this is where you wanted to go, you'd say approval, subject, resolution, blah, 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 subject to this with the amendment, that no improvements proposed for the NEF Lounge are approved, period. You know, and then that, that category exemption that you'd be granting would only be for the project as you're approving it. If that makes sense.
So we can, we can break it down into thirds, essentially?
You can do whatever you want to do, yes, but yes, you can. You can craft it any way you want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Klinger?
Yes, thank you. I'm back. So we'll start from the beginning and, and as was mentioned, this, there's really kind of like three geographic areas of the resort that's, that's being affected by the proposed, uh, renovation work. One is the, the lobby area and the entrance drive coming in. So it's kind of the arrival of the hotel, of the restaurant, of the resort. The next part is the, the pool, which is going to be completely renovated, that, that area with the... with the exception of some parts that are going to stay, the, where the concessions are right now and, and the trellising and so forth, that will stay. And then there was the, the Maravilla Restaurant, the bar, and then the NEF Lounge, which we already discussed, discussed. We discussed in particular the NEF Lounge, which is that historic component, which is now not going to be touched, and we'll have to kind of redesign to kind of accommodate the new bar and to make that work with the restaurant and make that, keep that component intact. So that's, I mean, that's our strategy going forward. We don't have a strategy right now that we can present based on that. But, so to kind of start over with our thing, if I could get the presentation queued up, the PowerPoint presentation. So let's see, we are, let's go back to the beginning here real quick. Okay, so as I, as I mentioned, there's really, this is a site plan showing the, the main portion of the, the resort. Get out my green pointer again here. This is the main entrance drive. The, the drive-through is here, the drop-off area. There's a canopy here right now. This is the existing lobby, which we proposed to renovate. This is the pool and cabanas, and everything that's there will be redone, including the pool itself. And then here's the, the Maravilla Restaurant, the bar, and the NEF Lounge, which is, the NEF is here. And then this is the courtyard outside the NEF, courtyard here, and then the restaurant itself in this location. So this is kind of a, a concept plan for what the proposed changes are to the entrance drive. We're proposing to, to put in some markers. These are Italian cypress that are going to kind of create this kind of entrance colonnade, so to speak, as you go up to the entrance of the hotel, which is right here. There will be an improvement in the paving in this area, in a higher quality finish. Whoops, sorry. So in this area, there'll be a higher quality material, a stone material that'll be in that area, along with new landscaping in all of this area. There's also proposed signage that shows up on this. It's kind of unfortunately sideways, but this shows kind of where the, the new sign for the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa will be, a monument sign on the, on the side of the wall. And so this is kind of the landscape plan that's been further developed. If you go here, there's some examples of some of the plant materials that'll be used, the Italian cypress, some of the perennials that'll be used in the project, as well as a list of all the plant materials that are proposed. The plant materials will all be drought tolerant, or there'll be plants that are proved in that way. So here's a, a plan of the proposed entrance. The entrance is here. There'll be new doors in this location. The design calls for removing the, the current arch that's in that area and making it a square opening versus the arched opening. There's a new front desk here and a lounge area here. And then you go through, the idea is to open up this whole back area, which currently is divided into two spaces and make it into one. There'll be a little gift shop here, and then there'll be some concierge desks in this location for the, for the guests. So that's the basic planning. This is pretty extensive structural modifications to the buildings that were built in, Brian, what was the date that the buildings were built in?
Eighties.
In the lobby? That was like the eighties?
Oh, yeah, eighty-six, and then it was modified in ninety-four, and then again in two thousand and three.
So this, this building itself doesn't have a historic, any historic connotation other than its design, which is kind of historic flavor to it. This is a section through the lobby that shows the new doors here, which will be solid wood doors that are carved. There'll be a nice table here in the center and a new chandelier. We proposed open windows on either side. Currently, there's a false door with a little, kind of false balcony there. That will be removed, and then we'll have real windows, and the space will be a bigger, brighter space inside. And as well as the, the rose window up at the top, that'll, that'll be maintained. However, the arch will be removed in that area, and we'll just have doors here. Part of the reason is functional with the arch removal. It has to do with the amount of light that comes in that space, and to certain times of the day, it's like too hot and too bright. And so here's elevation on the inside. This shows the front desk location, shows the new windows that'll be in the top of the building. And these, these are quite deep. I think it's like about five or six feet deep, so that the light that comes through will be quite filtered. And then this is the area beyond, which is opened up for that extension of the lobby space, and that will also open up to a courtyard in the back, which currently is underutilized. This shows the proposed entry, proposed entry doors. What it doesn't show is there's actually, the outline of the arch is going to be maintained. If you look at your packet, there's a photograph that shows the arch itself, the Ojai Valley Inn inscription, and that will stay as it is. We'll just lower it down, and the plaster will be in the same plane as the outside surface of the arch. This gives you, this is the picture that I was talking about. Truncated this area and keep the, kind of the shape of the arch above the new doors. This is a picture of the proposed courtyard or patio off the back of the lobby. The back of the lobby is in this location. There'd be two new doors in this location where currently there are windows. And it'll open up into this patio that'll have a new water feature here, new paving, new seating, and just be a pleasant place to sit and, and kind of activates the lobby. It's a transition space that people who come to events at the hotel can use as a, as a quiet retreat from meetings and so forth. This is a modification of the exterior on the corner of the, the building, close to that patio that we just looked at. We just, we're just moving the doors over a little bit to the right from where they are currently, the existing being here, the proposed here. And then this is relocate, or the, creating doors, double French doors here and here, where currently there are windows in that location. This is the existing patio. This will be changed. The, the current fountain will be removed, and a new fountain will be put in its place that opens up the center of the, the space. And this is a technical drawing from the landscape architect showing that, all the detail pertaining to that. These are some of the materials that we're proposing to use. They're, they're also shown here on the, on the table, the sample boards. So this, from here, we move on to the NEF. We've already looked at this quite a bit, and I, and I'll go through this quickly, just so you understand what the proposed changes are to the restaurant, so that in our future design, where we come back and, and keep the NEF pretty much intact, how we, how, what other things we're going to do in that area, so you can kind of see where we're going with this. This was the earlier design. This is the current design that showed the bar in this location. Of course, we'll be doing something different now. But there was a wine tasting room. The entrance to the restaurant would be, be here, the main entrance off this courtyard. New layout for the dining rooms. However, the ceilings will remain intact. Many of the current features of those rooms will, will remain intact. However, new wood flooring will be, be applied in most of these areas. One of the primary things we wanted to accomplish with the design was to create an easier way to get to this big patio, this exterior here. That's done by creating this, this hallway, which only exists right in this area now, but we'd extend it through here. This private dining room would become smaller, but more useful as it has the great view looking out over the golf course and the, and the mountains in the, in the background. This also shows what we're proposing here. We should have shutters on this side, remove the windows on the passageway, and make it into a breezeway, so that you, you flow through there when the restaurant's open. You can still go through there when the restaurant's closed, however, it kind of gives that feeling of, of passage when you go through when it's open. This we've already talked about, which is our proposed things in the NEF. This is the courtyard that's just outside the restaurant, and this being the entrance to the restaurant. There'd be a new fountain in this location and new planting. And there's an existing olive tree here that we're moving over. Olive trees are, are pretty easy to transplant and to move. We think that we'll have good success with this particular specimen, which will be the existing tree they're going to move. This courtyard, which is the one that's off the NEF Lounge, and the pool is over in this location, and the new breezeway, or the breezeway is in this location. Proposed new paving, new trees, new landscaping throughout. Currently, it's, it's another one of those kind of underutilized spaces that we think will add, this will add to the, kind of the ambience of that space, of that, and make it more useful as a gathering place for the resort. Some examples of some of the plant materials. And a detailed plan of the NEF court and of the, what we call the Ojai court. These are the elevations that we talked about before. And this is the plan, showing the existing NEF court, or Oroma Court, which is called. And then the passageway with the, the proposed shutters versus the windows that are there now. This NEF pictures. And so we go on to the pool. And the pool, this is the proposed design for the pool. It's a new configuration for the pool from what's there, so the existing pool will be removed. It should be, it should be noted that all of the areas of the proposed work have been disturbed. So they're not, they're, this area in particular, of course, was excavated prior for two pools. This is the third in a series of pools. It provides more deck area, more convenience in terms of having cabanas along this side. It maintains the existing trellis here and trellis along this edge. The new food, the food service area has been enhanced to provide a larger menu and to have a bar that people can step up to and, and order food or drinks. The restrooms in both the men's and women's will be renovated with new finishes. The design will stay pretty much the same. The exist, is the existing pool equipment room, and that building will stay basically the same. So these buildings on the exterior pretty much stay the same. We're going to close up. There's a door here. We're going to close that door. But other than that, I think the pass-through, there's a pass-through that stays here. It's, that's existing. This shows a little more detail in terms of the landscaping. It calls out the plant materials. Plant materials around the, the pool are all materials that were planted in the last renovation, so they're not, they don't have any historic significance. There are no heritage trees or oak trees that are being affected by any of these proposed This is an elevation showing the proposed cabanas and the, the new pool. It also shows on this very, this end, which is adjacent to the road that parallels the golf course, a proposed fountain. And the idea of this fountain is it creates the barrier for security and, and safety at the pool, but also creates a visual element that's going to be pretty nice. It's a zero-edge pool at the top, and the water falls off both sides, on the pool side, and then down to a, a rock swale here below. So as you walk by on the golf course side, there's this waterfall that comes down. It's a nice effect. And then this is the view, looking at the proposed existing trellis and, and doing some additional furniture pieces in that area to kind of liven that up. This is the proposed bar here on this side, and some dining, and some seating, seating areas. And this is the elevation, looking at it from the outside at the, the bar. Much of this is existing. Actually, it's from the inside, looking, looking back towards the existing building. So these are all existing here, existing trellis. This centerpiece is a new trellis that'll kind of mark this entrance off the backside that faces towards the putting, current putting green. Some examples of some of the materials that we're using. You can see a similarity between all the materials that I think are generally compatible with the, the, the design and character of the property as it currently exists. And some of the, the lighting materials, which are show up on our sample boards that are here on the table. Landscape plan. This shows the fountain. This is a view of the landscape from the golf course side, the road that extends along here, and then the, the landscaping on either side. And some of the materials that are proposed around the pool area. And this is an example of the cabana, what that's going to look like. It has a retractable awning at the, at the ceiling, and so there's like a private space, a semi-private space. I think just in, in general terms, I think the proposed renovations, if you can approve portions of the, the work, particularly the lobby and the work at the pool, and we can come back with some other ideas in terms of the bar and how we, we address those. But as I mentioned before, the resort is, is closing. It's a scheduling thing. You know, they schedule events, they schedule people, people to come to the resort, and to cancel those would be a problem any other time, except for this one week, when the hotel, the resort closes down and they're able to do this heavy work. You know, there'll be some excavation machines for the pool. There'll be some cranes and things like that that'll come out for a ten-day period, and then they're gone, and then it's all mostly interior and kind of lower impact work. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Is there any part of the NEF Lounge that does not have any historical significance? Like the breezeway, is that included in the NEF Lounge?
That was built in 1934 as part of the original guest room addition to the country clubs.
So, so needless to say that if we do not approve the removal of that wall and the, and changing the windows to doors, you will, will not be moving forward with any other aspect of this project here on the NEF Lounge.
Yes, without, without further design.
Even the flooring change, all that will just be on hold?
Right. We would come back with a, with a new design that, that we hope will satisfy everyone.
I have a question too. Would that include the, the restaurant area as well?
Well, the restaurant, the key to the restaurant was moving the bar. Currently, the bar location is inside the restaurant, and the, the plan that we presented pulled it outside into that transition way, area, which used to be the South Portico of the NEF Lounge. And, and so now we'll have to find another place for the bar. And so, so that, because that element needs to find a place to live, everything else in the Maravilla Restaurant is kind of on the table to be moved around a little bit.
Thank you.
I have a question. Would you generally say that the, excluding the, the NEF Lounge, that the exterior improvements, you know, the pool area and what have you, didn't have a little bit more of a contemporary edge to them?
The cabanas in particular, yeah, they, they are a little more contemporary.
And for instance, I, I was a little confused too. I mean, I like a lot of what you're doing, but if I looked at the, the architectural rendering of the pool renovation and then the landscape one, like the materials are different on the hardscape, and so it was a little hard for me to tell what direction you were going in.
The material is more, more correctly represented on this drawing, in terms of what, what it looks like. In, in the, this was an earlier drawing that showed more schematically, it was more about the seating and so forth than it was. So, so what the material, proposed material is, is this granite right here? It has a, kind of a rough texture to it.
So that would be the hardscape around the pool?
That would be the hardscape around the pool.
Okay. So even, even the drawing doesn't reflect that?
The, this, this drawing here reflects the patterning. And so what, what you see here is a field, like a running bond of material here of that granite. And then also the perimeter. What, the hard line that you see there is, it's not going to be quite so pronounced as it is in the drawing. It's, it's the perimeter gutter. Well, there's a gutter that goes around that picks up the water. It's a, it's a thin slot, basically, like a- It's, it's a thin slot, basically, like a joint left out. And then the, the coping around the pool will be also the same material.
The granite. Yeah, unfortunately, I, and this may have been called out on the landscape plans, I had a little bit of a hard time reading the callouts on the, the reduced drawings. I wish we would have had a full set, because some of that information maybe would have been a little more clear to me. Thank you.
Also, in regards to the pool renovation, I would have also liked to have had a before and after on that and the lobby, because it's very difficult to know what's being built and what's there. I went there today looking around, and I had to interpret everything. In fact, there's, there's not even a, a callout on this, on this plan telling me what's staying and what's existing and what's new. With that said, on the, as far as the construction part, as far as the dwelling itself, can you review again with me what part of the dwelling is changing on that?
Okay. Well, if we, if we look at this, this probably isn't going to show up, but I, I can show you my, with a finger here. So all of this, these buildings here are existing to remain. We're reach, we're, we're doing some interior work here. We're actually adding a little piece here for this little bar that comes out. So this is all interior work here. There's a little piece here that comes out that'd be actually under the trellis. So there's a trellis here that's existing that will remain. There's also a trellis across here that's existing that will remain. The new structures on the pool deck are the cabanas and the special cabana here, and of course, the pool, and all the deckwork is new. Everything on the deck is going to be replaced with new.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other commissioner questions of the applicant? Are there any questions from the public? Comments from the public?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, and please state your name again for the record. Thank you.
My name's Patrick Toomey, native Sheamus consultant here in the Ojai Valley at 992 El Camino Corto. My question is that with the ground disturbances that may occur at any time, it's possible when there's tree removal or any new grounds being broken open, that it's possible there might be archaeological resources in the area. I've heard nothing about, all I've heard tonight is about the historic parts. And to divide the two, you have historic and prehistoric, and I haven't heard anything mentioned about the prehistoric conditions that may, may exist in the area. I'd like you to consider that and move forward. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Go ahead and please state your name again for the record. Thanks.
Daunting North Signal Street. I would like to second what Patrick said about evaluation of cultural resources on this property. The point, if, if you could circulate what I had provided earlier, that would be great. The point I had made on number two, that CEQA requires you to determine the, to identify and evaluate any archaeological resources that may exist before you make decisions about exemptions, about whether or not CEQA applies. Secondly, a categorical exemption is being recommended here by the city staff. And again, if you take a look at number four, we talk about unusual circumstances in this property, and previous court cases have shown that due to the size of this property, it would qualify as an unusual circumstances. There's also the potential for, as we've heard about the NEF lounge, changes to historic resources, and that does include cultural resources, which we still have not yet fully identified in terms of understanding the scope of the project and what any earth disturbing activities might do. And lastly, the, the fifth point, according to CEQA, once you have an existing environmental impact report, and one has been identified as this, on this project, there's a final EIR, you can't go back to the beginning and claim an exemption. So there's, I provided the sections for which there's a subsequent supplemental, I believe, an addendum that can be done to an EIR. But to exempt part of this project, any part of this project really may be considered piecemealing under CEQA, and it does not comply with, with state law. So I'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from commissioners or the public?
You can go ahead and close the public hearing if you would, please.
So without the, the public hearing is closed?
Thank you.
And so I ask if there's a planning commissioner with a motion?
I think you need to ask him if you want to deliberate at this point.
Okay.
Discussion and, and questions to staff?
Sorry, trying to rush you. Commissioner Zabilla?
Yeah, Ms. Wall, can you respond to the comments that have been raised through the public with regard to?
To CEQA?
The CEQA.
Okay, do you want me to go point by point?
Well...
Okay, so.
I guess.
It's not, it's not correct. You, you can categorically exempt something once there's been an EIR. I mean, obviously, people have EIRs for lots of large projects. The CEQA identifies the project that's before you tonight, and if that project before you tonight qualifies as a cat exempt, and that's the, you know, CEQA is a decision tree, the first question that you ask is, is it a project or is it not? Yes, it is. It goes through the CEQA. Is it category exemption? Is it, does it qualify one, yes or no? And then it moves, and then if you say yes, you can't then drop it down into an FIR, an EIR or a final EIR. So that's not correct. The project, as the applicant has already indicated, was, it's not within our thresholds of the, the city of Ojai. It requires a Phase One or a Phase Two. There's nothing on the project before you tonight that hasn't already been previously disturbed numerous times. So the potential is not heightened to find any archaeological resources because it's already been disturbed. That is a standard within the industry, as the applicant indicated. That is how, that is how it works. So the prom, the primary part of this project is renovation. It's not an additional, it's not building out, it's no, not new foundations. You know, we have conditioned it with the same mitigations that were in the, the final EIR, which was deliberate to keep those same conditions, and it's even state law, even if we didn't place those things on there. As far as calling the coroner if you find it remains, that's state law. We do that as a reminder to everyone, because there are lots of times on construction sites there are people that don't understand the state law. So I don't think that there's anything before you tonight, except for, as staff pointed out in the staff report, the issue of what the work is being done on the, on the, on the historic NEF lounge. Now, if you find, make the finding, if you disagree with the historic commission, and you find that the, the items that are proposed are not detrimental to their historic, you know, if you have a different of opinion, then you can go ahead and do, and find the categorical exemption. As I point out in the staff report, you can only find the category exemption if you find that it doesn't damage a cultural resource. That's, that's stated in the CEQA guidelines, CEQA section statutes. But if you were to condition the project that the NEF lounge remain intact, you know, that, that no, I mean, as it is, you know, work is all approved except that, then I don't believe you have an issue. Staff wouldn't feel hesitant in recommending to you that there's not an issue with a categorical exemption.
Ms. Wall, I have a further question on attachment A, page four of eight, and I think these are the conditions of approval. So number eight, A, it says, and I just want to clarify, it says, "The applicant shall ensure that Native American and archaeological monitors are present on site during all grading operations." So isn't that, so is that in fact saying what it's saying?
I'm sorry, what?
So basically, part of the conditions of approval are that there are monitors. Is that correct?
That is true.
Through all grading?
That's true.
I think that somewhat addresses some of the concerns brought forth in the public comments.
And that's, that's basically just the pool area, really?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that, you know, I don't know if there's, you know, it just, that I believe it's mostly the pool area too, which is, like I said, has already been previously disturbed, but, you know, the, these are, these are straight out, the wording of them was the wording from the FEIR, how the previously project was conditioned, which was a much long, larger, orig, you know, the previous one in 2002 was a much larger project. So I incorporated them in, because if they were appropriate for that project, I could believe they're appropriate for this one even on a much smaller scale.
So I just want to clarify, then there will be a monitor on site?
They will have a monitor on site when they are doing grading, and if you feel more comfortable, the wording was taken from the FBI. I don't have a problem, you know, with you changing it to all ground disturbing operations, but obviously, you know, they're going to have to have a, a monitor out there when they're doing demo, because they're going to be taking this pool out. There's a lot of grading. You know, they're going to remove this pool and regrade and, and all that. So they're going to have a monitor out there while they're doing that.
Thank you.
So, so just to be clear, what's the higher standard of, that you were suggesting? To have a monitor during any?
I think, I don't really think that, I think that the, the intent is that, you know, grading, ground disturbance, ground moving, however you want to use the wording. I mean, I'm more calm, like I said, this wording was the wording that was used on the previous project. I don't think there's, it's just for the applicant to know at any time they're moving dirt, or they're digging, or they're doing something that they should have a monitor. There is no, there was no requirement that he have a monitor out there with tree planting. That's, that's far beyond the threshold that was required on this project, even at a larger scope. Again, this project isn't within the thresholds of some of the other projects that are in the city of Ojai. This is just a precautionary, it isn't, the, it wasn't identified in any of the resources that we have in our offices of being within the threshold.
Are the, I, I don't know who this is a question for. Maybe for the applicant, I, I'm not sure, but, or maybe for staff. I'm not sure. Does it, it says there's going to be six trees that are going to be removed. In the tree permit process, are the, is that when the trees are evaluated and a replacement value is?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so.
They're required as part of the tree process to have an arborist report. Now, let's just say, let me preface this by saying that protected trees within the city of Ojai require this. You know, the sycamores, the oaks, or any tree that's, I believe it's called heritage, is how they word it. So it may not require a tree report, but we don't even know at this point, it just says tree removed. So I wasn't able to identify whether or not, you know, what, what the species was. So they need to come in and demonstrate that to staff. But if it were one of the protected trees, they'd have to have an arborist report, they'd have to value the trees, and they'd have to demonstrate that they're replanting to that value.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for staff?
Yes, I do have a question. Let me organize myself here, because I'm going to be flipping back and forth. On attachment A, page two of eight, on the first paragraph, this has to do, I believe, with the conditions of approval, yes. You mention, let's see, "This project adheres to the context, continuity, scale, and architectural design of design review standards. Conditions have been added to the project to ensure adherence to the city's dark sky landscape and tree ordinances." And then when I looked at the conditions of approval, I didn't see that the landscape was added back in. I saw the tree and mention of the dark sky. So that I just wanted to look at or have you address. And then the other question is, because normally in a DRP, we will be, you know, have the opportunity to look at the lighting, a lighting plan and/or the lighting study, which is not included. We'd also be looking at any trees that could be impacted. They're not shown on the plan. So I was a little, and some other things weren't identified, and I feel like I don't have all the information. It's a little more conceptual than ready to go for a permitting phase.
Staff would, would agree with your analysis. Some things are more conceptual, you know, the landscape, et cetera. I'm looking for the landscape one, because my intention was to put it in there, and if, oh, number five.
Did I miss it?
Yeah, three of eight.
Maybe you had it on there and I missed it.
All proposed outdoor lighting shall comply with Section 10.2165.5, which is the dark sky, or the new lighting.
That's the lighting, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then what about the landscape? So that would need to get added in?
Oh, you were talking about landscaping?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Because you mentioned that in the previous, on the previous page.
Because I want to make sure that.
We may just need to add it.
I, I thought I had one in here, and maybe it fell off. Let me see. Maybe I did not include it, but what, what I'm, what I intended to put on here, and maybe, I'm glad that's a good catch, was that prior to the issuance of any building permit, that full landscape plans, and I, I don't, I mean, I'm sure I wrote it, so maybe somehow it got deleted, but what, what I need for them, I'm looking to see if I can find it, but what, then I guess you need to add it, is that fully detailed landscape plans be submitted, including the, the compliant with the new regulations, including the water efficient criteria. I know that I have this one up here, if you look at number 14 on six of eight, where it says, "Prior to supplemental grading or any building plans, a qualified arborist shall review the grading plans carefully in relationship to existing trees."
Yeah, that's.
So I think that, that's handling the tree issue. But I do, I did intend to, and I think you do need to add one, and that, that clearly says that we won't issue any permits until there's a fully developed landscape plan. And if you want to see that, you know, if you want that to come back before you, that, that would be fine. I think the applicant could get started on the other things. You know, this window of opportunity, as they, as they stated tonight, is more for these large, heavy-duty construction activities, and you might want to ask the applicant if, if, how they would, if you'd like to see, if there's some of these things that you think are conceptual, if you'd like to see the lighting back again, if you'd like to see the landscaping back again, then, yeah, Sherry's noting out, noting landscaping and irrigation, just include that in the wording. I think you should bring the applicant back up and ask him about wording conditions that may allow him to go forward with the other parts of the project, and then bring the, the final, you know, fully vetted plans back before you.
Okay, thank you.
And I say that, I'm sorry, but if I may, I say that provided that you, looking at the conceptual, and you like the layout and where the plants are, you know, if you're fine with that portion of it, but you're just interested in the next layer, the next evolution of the plan, then I think it'd be appropriate for you to do that.
Do you, well, do you think that this affects, I mean, we're supposed to find, just one clarification, we're supposed to find that the other aspects of this project beyond the NEF lounge do not affect the historical integrity of the building? Is that correct? Does that have nothing to do with it?
Well, I think that, you know, if you were, I, I think that it's, that it's, I think you can go ahead and make that finding, because I think that the other aspects don't really, I mean, unless you're actually feel that what is presented tonight affects the context of the NEF lounge, I mean, you know, so you do really need to make that finding. But I think you, you, in order procedurally to move forward with any other part of the DRP, you need to, you know, either disagree with the Historic Preservation Commission or concur with their findings, and make sure that, that, you know, the condition is placed on there that the NEF lounge shall not, shall remain intact as is, to make that categorical exemption finding.
Can we make a resol, can we make a resolution simply as stated with the deletion of the NEF lounge?
I would suggest that, you know, you, that you place a condition on there that, that the NEF, because it's all written in the way that it's written, as proposed, that you condition the NEF lounge to remain as is, no changes. That you're, you're placing it in a positive as a condition, that there's, there's no ... a positive as a condition, that there's no misunderstanding that, that nothing is approved for the NEF lounge, if that's the way you choose to go.
Okay. The way I feel, I concur with Historical Commission as far as the NEF lounge is concerned. I think the rest of it doesn't affect the NEF lounge. The pool area, basically, the boundary is staying the same. The lobby's staying the same. You know, the addition of a few windows and the lowering of the front entrance. So I have no problem with that. I agree.
Can I ask a question?
Why, certainly.
The NEF court, would they be, I mean, the NEF court does affect the NEF lounge, and so they would be ruling on the NEF court. Am I correct?
Well, I think that, that, that you need to make that very clear in your, in your motion, what you're taking action on. Again, we have a long history here of not being very clear and everyone's, you know, is thinking one thing. So be very clear about what, what, when you're crafting a condition about the NEF lounge or anything, so what you feel is historic. You sat and you listened through the Historic Preservation Commission's deliberations, and you just need to make sure that you're very clear on what you want to remain the same. As he said, you know, NEF lounge, the doors, the windows, I mean, the things. We went through what was proposed. The applicant's still here if you want to reopen the public hearing and, and make sure that you have concurrence on what that is, then I would suggest you do that.
I'm pretty clear about that. I don't think we need to review that again.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that I'm, I'm in agreement with Historical Preservation as far as the NEF lounge, and I do agree that, you know, if they're going to put doors in or if it's windows, it's definitely going to relate to or and/or affect the landscape, meaning the exterior patio areas. So I realize that the materials and the plant, you know, existing plants are not historical, but because of those possible exterior changes, it will have some ramifications. So to me, it seems like any exterior areas that are related to the NEF should be tied into coming back in and at another, you know, revised.
Yeah, we should divide it into three aspects.
Right.
NEF lounge and all, all aspects of that, including the landscape around it.
Exactly.
And then the pool area and then the entry area.
Right.
The lobby.
Okay.
Who wants to make a motion?
I was just going to say thank you. Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, I was just going to point out that there were things in the work permit that we denied, which included the north portico and the south portico, and those were all written up in the work permit that we declined. So I think that was our concern, were those items listed in there. So, just to clarify that.
All right. Another idea would be to continue it, have them come back with more information, and then take a look at it then. I don't know if anyone is.
I think it's pretty clear on the.
You're pretty clear?
Yeah, I think the, the NEF lounge is the big, the big problem, and I think we can isolate that, separate that out, give them the, go ahead on the other parts of the project, and we'll come back and visit that one later, because we're all in pretty much consensus on that.
Yep.
I think. I don't know.
No, I'm happy with that.
I think it's a good compromise based on their constraints and what they've already sort of sorted out with their schedule and time of day and time of the year and, okay.
Who wants a, who wants a craft resolution?
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. For the approval of the design review permit, DRP 1418 at the Ojai Valley Inn for renovation to the historic landmark. To, for the, well, I should include all of the above, even though I'm going to make a condition, right? So for the renovation to the historic landmark number nine NEF lounge and the main lobby and pool area, with the condition that the NEF lounge and all the surrounding.
Excuse me, Commissioner Jagiello, could you just start at the recommendation where you're adopting planning commission resolution?
Okay.
Because he didn't say CEQA.
I did that. I said that.
Okay.
He didn't include the CEQA.
Well, the resolutions, CEQA's in the resolution, so you're fine. We've, we're now putting it to where you only have to make one motion because CEQA's all encompassed in that.
Yes, right. That's what I thought. So then I'm at, I'm just putting the condition that the NEF lounge and all ancillary projects associated with it have, have no changes, how do I state that?
Say, no alteration shall be done, no improvements, oh, yeah, yeah, she's saying, yeah, however you want to say it, just say that no NEF, no changes to the NEF lounge and the associated courtyard, is that?
Yes.
Are approved. Those areas shall remain as existing.
Okay. Is that good? Sherry, you have that? Okay.
Do you have a second?
Do too.
Commissioner Zabilla?
Okay, so, does this, do they retain the right to come back and have the exterior reviewed? If they want to change the landscaping to the exterior?
The exterior of what?
Of the NEF lounge courtyard area. Do they have that? Do they retain that? Can they come back at a later time and say they want to?
Oh, then I guess you need to say, they have a couple of different options available to them. They can appeal this decision to the city council. Your decisions are appealable. They could, I guess you, you would probably want to say this, you know, technically you're not denying it, you're just conditioning it so they can come back. If you were denying it, you'd have to do it without prejudice in order for them to come back. But I think that, you know, that the applicant has indicated that, that the interior, that he will be coming back with interior renovations. My brain's kind of working at the same time. So I guess, I guess what I would say is that you could add a condition to that if you wanted to, if you wanted to save him from having to, you know, apply again and pay fees. You could say, you know, interior renovations, you know, if that's what you choose to do, I mean, if the applicant has, has something, he's going to be of value.
It's just a question. Maybe it's not a practical thing.
Wait, hold on. In order to get this on the record, you have to, you have to go through the chair, ask the chair if you can be recognized, and then go back to the podium.
Please come forward.
Okay, thank you.
Since we fully intend to come back with a new idea for the, for the NEF lounge, preserving its integrity and redoing the courtyards and the, and the Merrievia restaurant, is it possible to continue just that portion of it, to come back under the same thing and, and then approve the other parts, which there's no controversy?
That's what we're trying to do.
Okay. So that's, so that's, I, if it's going to say, no, you can't do it, then we have to come back with a new permit, then that's more, makes it more difficult.
Then, then I guess you're going to, you're going to make the finding, then you're going to, what he's asking is for you to consider your, your motion, and instead of saying no changes, you're going to say, the applicant shall return with a different proposal, however you want to say, a new proposal for the NEF lounge, keeping in all its historical elements, blah, 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 and return to planning commission. What's your timeframe for that?
Well, it's hard to say because we don't know what we're going to do yet, but we've already thought about this a little ahead of time, the designers as well. And so, you know, it, it won't be, we won't be able to make it back in time for this year. I think as soon as we can have something, we would bring it back. But the main thing is to get those first two, the lobby and the pool approved, so we can go forward with those projects and then come back to you later. So if that's, if we can open the door that way, that would be really helpful to the, to the inn and to their operation.
Thank you.
So that would be kept under the existing permits, then?
Yes, because you're directing him. You are actually giving him direction. You're going to say, if that's how you choose to write it, you know, the applicant shall return by such and such a date, within 90 days of this approval, with renovations to the NEF lounge and the associated improvements, which keep all historic elements intact.
Okay, thank you.
Something like that.
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay. We like that.
So we had a motion, and then we amended the.
We're going to amend the motion. Could we use that statement that Kathleen just eloquently said?
All right. And then I need to add, if that's okay, to the conditions of approval, that prior to any permits being issued, a complete landscape and irrigation plan be submitted, reflecting our most recent landscape ordinance, and that any trees that are going to be affected by construction be shown on the plans, in addition to the trees that are going to be slated for removal, be labeled or identified, period. And then a comment, so Kathleen, would we, is there a chance that we would be, look, or could look at that then when the applicant comes back and continue, you know, with that portion, the other portion of the project?
Do you need to have your landscape done before 90 days?
No.
Are you, are you?
No, we don't. We want to go after the front entry landscaping during those 12 days, obviously inside those 90 days. Do I need to?
Yeah, you do. It's for the mic. It won't be recorded if you talk from your seat. I'm sorry.
Please announce yourself. Thank you.
Brian Skaggs, Director of Engineering. Been there a little over 20 years, in fact. But I can speak to the trees. There, there's no heritage trees, no oak, no sycamores that will have any impact. We're not within the canopies on any of these projects. The trees for removal are all trees that we've planted in the past, specifically during the 2003 renovation, when around the pool area that was taken down to dirt. Every tree, every shrub, every plant there was planted by us, and, and none of those heritage, although we will be going back with, with things that are more native to the Ojai Valley. In fact, our landscape architect, Leland Walmsley, is the great grandson of Wallace NEF, somehow. Anyway, he's, he's related. So everything, everything going back is going to be indigenous to Ojai. He's, he's, he's very green in that regard.
Okay. So, yeah, hopefully that'll be reflected on the plans and then we'll get to see all that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And as far as irrigation, just in case you all don't know, we just finished a two and a half million dollar re-irrigation project of our golf course, which is going to save about 20, 30% water usage out there. So we're very keen on, on that natural resource.
Okay. Thank you.
So the motion is made. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Any more discussion? No.
Commissioners Nicklin?
Yes.
Nolan? Yes. Zabilla?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Lajowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With that, we can adjourn this joint, first ever joint meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission and the Ojai Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you, everyone.
It was a pleasure working with you all this evening.
Likewise.